Good morning, everybody, and welcome to another episode of The Rad Life. If you haven't noticed, it's election season. And I have said this before, and I will remind everybody, if you're running for for election in 2020, whether you are local to my area of South Orange County, or regionally, Orange County as a whole, or even LA, San Diego, even national, actually, if you happen to be, you know, an Arab American out there, love to have you on the show if you are involved in a particular project or advocating for something, running for any position, whether it's city council, congressional, you know, water district, please, 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 reach out to me and let me know if you're interested in being on The Rad Life. I'm giving candidates about an hour of time, because I feel like, especially in 2020, although it happens normally, candidates don't really get a chance to be heard by the voters. You don't get to know them, you know? It seems like our involvement, our connection with the candidates has become mostly social media, Snapchat, you know, meme kind of things, or, excuse me, if we have a debate, it's very short snippets of time that we give them. We don't really get to know the people. And the those who know me know that I am a non-party preference registered voter, and I always believe that it's I vote for the person and the subject, the issue. I don't do party voting. I that doesn't mean that I don't agree with certain policies on both sides, actually, when it comes to certain things, but I don't I don't vote along the party line. And in 2020, I think it's incredibly important that we have the opportunity as voters to really get to know the candidates that we are considering for elected positions, regardless what it is, like I said, municipal, federal, or even regional. So with that being said, I would like to welcome today to the show, to The Rad Life, a lady who is running for city council in a neighboring city of Laguna Niguel. Shani Muslahey is running for the 2020 election cycle for city council. I'm going to bring her in right now, and we're going to find out a little bit more about Shani, and why she decided to run for city council. This is a very accomplished lady in her own right, and she has now decided to throw her hat in the ring for city council in Laguna Niguel. So let me see if I can get her from the waiting room here. We're having a little bit of a sluggish connection today. Here she is. Shani, are you there?
Yes.
There she is. Hi, how are you? Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I, in my introduction, mentioned, and I talked to you about this before a little bit, is that, you know, it seems every year, the time and opportunity that we have, the opportunities that we have as voters, to get to know candidates that we are that we are being asked to consider for elected seats, whether it's regional, municipal, or even, you know, federal, seems to get shorter and shorter, and seems to start becoming more of a snippet of social media, or a one-liner, or what have you. And I I kind of think we missed out on getting to know the person. And I am a I vote for the person, I vote for vote on the issues. I don't vote along party lines. So I wanted to give you this opportunity to get people to know you. I know you're running for city council in Laguna Niguel. So why don't you tell people about your background? I know you're accomplishing your own rights, so let's tell people all about Shani.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. This is wonderful. You're right, it's really hard to go door to door. It's really hard to host an event. We don't, we don't do any of that anymore. So our only chance is to either do mailers, phone banking, texting, and now this is a great opportunity. So I appreciate that. My name is Shani Muslahey, and I am an immigrant. I was born in Iran and left to go to a boarding school in Switzerland, then continued here to California, where I graduated from high school and moved on to college and got my degrees in social sciences and business. I met my husband 35 years ago, was a good catch, so I married him and moved to Orange County. That's where my life in Orange County started 35 years ago. We moved to Laguna Niguel 18 years ago, and we have raised both our children here. I have always been a very involved citizen and an involved parent. So I was on the board of directors with PTA, PTSA. I ran the high school foundation for a few years at Dana Hills High School, and I also sat at as a board member for high school football. A brave woman I am.
Wow, yeah, I'm impressed.
I know. I still don't know anything about football, but I knew how to raise money and how to help the team, so that counted. I started my career in banking, and 10 years after that, I decided to stay home and have children. And at that point, staying home was a great option, but I was kind of bored. So I started a home daycare, which was exemplary at the time. I then decided this is a great opportunity to raise my children and go to school with them. So I went back to school and got my California teaching credentials. I started teaching as a substitute teacher for Capistrano Unified School District. So that gave me the opportunity to meet a lot of students, a lot of teachers, and a lot of parents, and, you know, get even more involved with the community.
That is, that is a huge school district. That was one of the largest in the country, yeah.
Yes, and I actually worked for the Capistrano Unified School District before moving to Laguna Niguel, which gave me a great opportunity again to get to know more about the city that I was moving into with my children. You know, I'm I'm a very involved citizen, so I, you know, in the past, I have hosted Free Health Expos in Orange County with in collaboration with Alzheimer's Orange County and CalOptima. I have also done a few blood drives to save the life of a child. I'm involved with various children's charities. Back in the day, after I got my teaching credentials and I was ready to go and be a full-time teacher, my husband bought a business, and that's when my life turned, and I became a business owner. I had to quickly learn how to manage budget, market the business, as well as manage 600 events a year. And that's when, when you talk about larger scale, that's when I learned how to manage large-scale anything. And that business, you know, was basically where I learned that the need that we have for small business protection and a small business backup and planning and all that wasn't really available at the time. So in 2015, in with a few other ladies in Laguna Niguel, we started a Chamber of Commerce just for that, just to give, you know, provide information, educate new business owners, and give them the resources that they need.
Is this is this the Orange County Iranian-American Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, we established the Orange County.
Yeah, I'm gonna put up the logo and the and the website for people who are interested. I thought I found that very fascinating as an immigrant myself, and I think you and I actually have probably some parallel paths, especially I'm very interested now, and I'll talk to you off-camera later about about your Switzerland experience, because I just posted a video yesterday about that came out, that was a promo video for a school that's no longer around that I went to, that was from 1988. And, yeah, it we have, I think we have a lot of parallels paths, but the reason I I was very intrigued by this is I actually am a chairman of the Arab American Civic Council, and that is in Anaheim, right? And I find it very intriguing, and I love being having the opportunity, and this is like a happy accident here, is to highlight the contributions of immigrants. Because I think a lot of times, we are very infused into the fabric of America, and we are very engaged on levels that most people don't realize. And we are, we're giving in our own ways, in our own, in our own talents, and in our own ways to further and improve things. This is a perfect example. So tell me about, you know, and whenever a few ladies get together to come up with something, most people, if they're smart, they should be paying attention. So what so what happened with this?
Well, honestly, it was the opposite. Most of the people that we approached wanted to know who was on our board of directors. Basically, they were looking for gentlemen that were running the show. So in order to prove them, you know, that prove that we can do this, we really had to work hard and be consistent with our programming. We have, ever since we established ourselves in 2015, we have continuously provided a platform for businesses to meet and to network. We offer educational workshops and seminars. Couple of years ago, we started an award, a business award program, which was very well received, where we we want to give an incentive to a small business so they could do better, whether it's economically, customer service, whatever. So that list is available, and they can opt to.
Especially in times like this, where you need that encouragement as a business owner. I mean, gosh, I mean, you, I can't even, I can't imagine, I am a business owner myself. I can't imagine people that are struggling right now with everything that's been going on for the last six months, and where that that support system and that encouragement to just stick it out, to maybe look at things in a different way, to to identify opportunities, not just only challenges, that's when you need that tribe, that that support. And good for you for doing that. And I noticed that it's not just Orange County, you also have the LA one. So how many members do you have combined in these Chamber of Commerce?
So we we just started the Los Angeles chapter in January, and we were doing really well until the pandemic happened. And within two weeks after the shutdown, we decided that this can't be, we need to support our businesses. So we went back online and started our Zoom weekly meetings. So if we've actually done better, because before we were just doing monthly meetings, now we were doing weekly meetings, we were doing newsletter, we were promoting all our members. So the results are actually better than before, believe it or not. We currently have 250 members, and we we are a membership organization. We are a non-political, non-religious, and nonprofit organization. So, you know, our goal is to really truly give back to the community and help them grow. So, you know, at this time, we waived our membership fees to make sure that our members stay, you know, economically healthy and just be a support for them, to truly give back to the community.
It's very supportive. I mean, I think I think this is a time of really giving and helping each other. We're all in this kind of together, it almost sounds like a cliche, but it's very true. Tell me, and I I was kind of smiling, because this is exactly what what I mean when I say, not only challenges but opportunities. If you look through at what's going on with COVID right now, situations like this, where it would be so much harder almost to corral, you know, 50 people into a room for an event. Now, because of the fact that people are maybe more sequestered, they're more eager to have more of a connection, a social component, and because of the ease of the technology out there, we are, if we put our hats on in a different way, we are able to actually have the success that you're talking about, have more people engaged, grow things, be more in contact more frequently, and without the overhead that usually was involved. You needed to get a place, I mean, you're in event, in the event business. You needed to get a place, you needed to get the caterer, you needed to get the range for the valet parking, whatever it was. Now, this is it.
Yes, and I think we should continue with this as part of that whole networking idea that we had before. So we would love to go back into a restaurant and meet, but I think we should continue with all the online meetings that is available.
It's just another layer. I mean, it's, we just now have added one more quiver in our, you know, in our arrow, arrows, is that it's 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 not, or one more arrow in our quiver. But it's it's really interesting if, when we talk about pivoting, and it's not like it's something that's happening over, and I think this also applies for people that are running for office. This isn't a weekend disruption. This is a genuine paradigm shift in how we basically interact and live. And you can see those who have a growth mindset in it, and those who have a bunker mentality. And it's fascinating to watch the human condition in that capacity. So you sound like you're really busy. So why would you want to go and run for city council?
Well, I'm actually not busy. My own business is event marketing, and that kind of shut down at the beginning of the year. So, you know, I'm actually having a lot of free time. But I'm just that kind of a person anyways. Even if I was busy, I wanted to do the right thing. I wanted to really be engaged with the city. I noticed that Laguna Niguel, really honestly, for the last 10 years, I haven't seen improvements. I've seen a lot of things that have been damaging to our city. For example, there's high rises on Cabot Road that everybody has complained about. And I found out that this whole approval to to build those apartments was actually done 10 years ago with the city council at that time. So I realized that the decisions that we make now will affect the next generation, and I want to protect them. I want to participate, I want to have a voice. You know, being a city council member is a non-partisan, non-paid position here in Laguna Niguel. So what I really wanted to do is to have a representation of people like myself. I'm very climate-conscious, and I feel like Laguna Niguel is behind. We just built a brand-new community center, and there is absolutely no solar panels on there. They're not using any, you know, green technology. There's no charging stations for electrical cars, and you're in, you know, this is 2020. So I really want to see our city to come up to 21st century. I also noticed that the older neighborhoods in Laguna Niguel are not being preserved, are not being taken care of. So again, I want to have a voice for people that live in those neighborhoods and make sure that they're being taken care of. Good neighbors and good neighborhoods are essential in every city, and we need to start now before it gets to to be a problem later on.
Well, and I think I think you raise a couple of really good points, because, I mean, I've been, we've been in, you and I have been in South County a while. It has changed, you know? It used to be that South County was very much, but it's not only limited to South County. You can argue like Anaheim Hills, North, North O.C., you know, Orange, certain areas were really considered bedroom communities. They were really just residential, you got off the freeway and you went home, and then you got back on the freeway in the morning, and it's sort of what you did on the weekends, and that was it. Well, for a number of things, whether it's cost of living, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's, you know, increase in commuter traffic, whatever it is, these bedroom communities are now not just bedroom communities. They are, and and it almost seems to me like there's such a hold, an attempt to hold on the nostalgia of what these communities are, that there's a resistance to basically step up to what the reality is, and then guide that leadership. And so a lot of things that happen are either remnants from the past that are now coming to fruition, or there's an avoidance, because I don't want to rock the boat. I got a lot of people that are older members of the community. But we also have, and I mean, I think Laguna Niguel is the same, we have an aging community. We have people that are older, that are staying in their homes longer. We have people that are older, therefore, they're not buying as much retail, you know? So our economic engines are changing, and it really is a time for leadership on these issues, because I firmly believe that there are opportunities for us to have a sustainable future on our own terms, where we don't sacrifice the quality of life that we have, to your point, like the high density. We need affordable housing, we need alternatives to housing. When I say affordable, you're saying affordable housing in South County, right? I mean, the numbers associated with that are nowhere close, you know, somewhere in the Midwest. I mean, the numbers are still astronomical, right, in terms of value? But we need to basically guide that ship in that direction, and so new blood is needed. I mean, it's just the nature of the thing. So with that, with that being said, I've asked this to other candidates that are running, and I'm going to ask it to you. I don't know if this already exists in Laguna Niguel or not. How do you feel about term limits?
Term limits are here in Laguna Niguel, four years. And then they can, we can run, so basically, a candidate can run twice, four years each time. Then they can take a break for two years, and then run again. I do have everything, there should be some limitations on, you know, one family running, basically. So if I'm running now and I'm done in eight years, my husband can now run, and I kind of feel like that shouldn't happen. I I'm against that, because I think we're still putting all the power in front, you know?
That starts to introduce an issue of nepotism, that starts to introduce an issue of of really kind of almost defeating the purpose of having term limits, to be honest.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, so so I'm sure, you know, with Laguna Niguel, you've got, you know, we have issues regionally, issues on the of the homeless, for example, which, in my opinion, and I don't know if you agree with me, but I think we need a regional solution for that. What do you think about the homeless situation?
I agree. I don't think Laguna Niguel is equipped to have like a year-round program or a wraparound program for homeless. Because they're not equipped, I think the county needs to step in, and I think we should have a nice program set where if you're going to have shelters, then we should have social and psychological services available as well. So this whole homelessness is not something that we can solve overnight, but we definitely need to be very empathetic and considering and, you know, try to help, you know, understand the situation better, and not just think of property values, or I don't want them in my neighborhood attitude. So for protection.
We're not really tackling the problem. We're kicking the can down the road, and we're making, we're hoping that somebody else basically finds a solution, whether it's family-assisted ministries, or some church efforts, or whatever. We're really not engaging in the solution, working out a solution. And I agree with you. I mean, I think these communities need to support a solution that, like it or not, will have to manifest itself in some sort of physical environment, right? Housing, support services. We also have a situation right now where we have a lot of real estate that is commercial real estate, whether it's office commercial or retail commercial, that because of whatever market forces, you know, everybody buying online on Amazon, the fact that people are going to basically have half their workforce working from Zoom and remotely, we have real estate that's already built. It could be adaptively reused, but it requires leadership at the level of permitting, city council being that level, a planning commission, another one, where we start approaching people and take leadership in repurposing some of these assets that we already have. So instead of basically having to approve a project in the middle of a residential area, which is going to get a lot of pushback, maybe looking at some of these resources that we already have that are now not really serving the purpose they were originally made for, and rethinking them might be a way to solve some of these problems that we have, at least temporarily, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah. What are, what are some of the other things, you know, educate me as a person who lives in a neighboring city, what are some of the things that that Laguna Niguel is dealing with that maybe have been longstanding issues or whatever? You mentioned a few of them, like some of these older neighborhoods that are kind of needing to be up-capped, and maybe some of those services are not happening. What are some of the issues that are specific to Laguna Niguel you guys are facing?
Sure. Laguna Niguel is actually a very wealthy city. We are not suffering much because of the pandemic, because we are not a tourist city. We know our our income comes from our property taxes, and we have two Costco's, Costco's and one Walmart, and they generate a lot of sales tax, because our neighboring cities don't have them. So they come shopping Laguna Niguel. So that that is a very beneficial thing for the city. The strange part is that every time I talk to a citizen or a resident here, they're all concerned about our budget and how we're going to manage our budget. I think we're doing very well. This this city is not lacking money, we have funds. I think we just need to maybe redirect some of the funds to pay attention to areas that are of my concern. You know, I I want to incentivize the small businesses, and I want to bring in new businesses to grow here in Laguna Niguel. And everybody thinks that's going to be money out of their pocket, and it's going to hurt our budget, but not really. To, you know, the the city has a brand-new app, the city has a brand-new website. If people are familiar with technology, we can use all that to offer small businesses opportunities to advertise again, in give them an incentive to do better and promote them as much as we can. You know, honestly, the the main concern right now, there are two concerns. One is our new town center, and there's a debate going on with that. And then we have this, the federal building on Alicia Parkway, the Zurgert Building, that it's also a debate. And a decision has to be made, because it's been sitting there for too long. And it's kind of an eyesore right now, because it's getting old, the parking lot is all, you know, messed up, the asphalt is all lifted and all that. So those are the two main concerns that the residents have, which will be addressed, I'm sure, in the, you know, during the next four years. And my my take on that would be to listen to everybody, to to try to see what is it that the city wants to do, and what is it that the people really want to do? And make the right decision. I think, again, there is a cost to doing a business, and we just have to make sure that that we're doing the right thing for the city. And moving forward, I'm hoping to have a voice for the people that think like me and live where I live, and, you know, we can all work together.
Do you think, do you think that, I mean, I think regionally this applies, but do you think that where we're at today in 2020, there are certain things that have shifted? And and I mentioned it a minute ago about, like, for example, an aging population. We have, we have people that are staying in their homes longer. They're living in neighborhoods that they've been in, let's say, for 20 years plus. They don't have any intention of leaving. They're healthier than their parents used to be, so they're able to get around a little bit better. But at some point, they're going to need to have an alternative form of transportation that is dependable and not just, you know, public bus. And they may be even multi-generational households, and it's very common ethnically for you and for me, but it's not an uncommon situation these days, especially with, you know, shrinking of of family asset resources, people needing to take care of people, it's not cheap. There's that happening, but at the same time, parallel to that, is we're also losing young people that were born and raised in these communities, because they can't afford to stay. So do you feel that, you know, both as a parent, both as a business owner, both as somebody that that is involved in your community, do you feel that the city council and leadership in the community, elected leadership in these communities, has a responsibility to basically start thinking about these new realities, and not just applying the same things that we've been doing 20 years, 20 years? Because without doing that, in my opinion, you don't develop new economic engines. You do not promote incubation of business. You do not provide alternative forms of transportation for people like my father, who maybe at 80, basically, 83, could not drive anymore because they lost their driving license. But they're not wanting to just stay at home and wait for the bus to take them to the hospital, to the doctor. What about the other stuff? How do you feel about that?
Well, back to the Zurgert Building and how I would like to see what happens to it. It's a huge, I think it's like, it's a huge lot, and it can be turned into affordable apartments, where I'm particularly thinking of elderly. So funny that you said that, because I was thinking my mother would love to have her own place where she doesn't have to travel in a car, because Zurgert is right in the center of our town and is right next to a huge shopping center, and, you know, we can have a trolley come and go and take these people back and forth.
For people who are not familiar with what Shani is referring to, there is a ziggurat-shaped building, ziggurat being a step pyramid, that is off Aliso Creek, Aliso and Alicia Parkway.
Alicia Parkway.
Alicia Parkway. And it is a federal building. It used to, it's been around for a very long time. It's a very interesting, from my professional perspective, it's a very interesting architectural building, very unique in this area, but it takes up a very large footprint. And those kind of mass plots, if you will, are not common anymore in built-out communities. So we actually have even a more acute responsibility to appropriately use them with that future mine in mind.
Yes, and and there are a lot of people in the city that want to preserve the building, because it's a historical building, and I have nothing against that. I think we can, if we have the money to preserve it, we can preserve it, that would be great, and repurpose it.
Yeah, you can repurpose it, exactly.
But I'm I'm told that it's very costly to repair the building, because it's was built in the 1970s, so there is a lot of asbestos and a lot of, the the cost of preserving it is very high. But regardless, they should do something, even if they, whether they touch the building or not, there is a huge lot that can be repurposed. We can have apartment buildings, we can have few nice restaurants and shops there. There's plenty of room for all that and Zurgert at the same time.
Yeah, Shani, it's not an unusual thing. This is not our first rodeo, if you will, of this nature of challenge. We had a similar situation with dirigible hangars at, you know, up up north in Tustin, right? I mean, they decided one of them was going to get torn down, and another one will be restored and repurposed, right? We have, we, in San Clemente, we have over 200 properties that are historical from 1920s. So I think if the motivation is to find a solution, you will always come with some sort of compromise solution that will be acceptable to most people. I think that the shame is when you basically just don't even explore that opportunity.
Yeah.
And and I agree with you. I think, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, the initial reaction is, you know, not in my backyard, no, 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 it's going to drop down property values. And I think, okay, you're assuming that everybody who's going to come in and live in these affordable housing, is it some sort of degenerate drug add? Okay, you're assuming that everybody who's gonna come in and live in these affordable housing, is it some sort of degenerate drug addict, what have you? But in course of taking that attitude, you're also dismissing seniors, you're dismissing young adults that are starting their life, you know? Um, and, and it could be a vibrant situation where it's not isolating both parties. Both of those could be basically housed in, in a nearby area, right? I mean, I don't know about you, but it, as I get older, the last thing I wanna do is look out my window and see people only my age. I'd like to see a range of people. And life, right? So I think, I think it's interesting that a lot of the communities in South County are coming of age this way. And some of these challenges are um, occurring in different places, right? Uh, the town center is a big one. I know about you guys with the town center and keeps going back and forth. You know, it's a large development. Usually sometimes that happens. What is the, what are your hopes? Okay, looking at being on city council? What are your hopes uh, from not only dealing with the challenges? Well, what are some of the things that you would hope to basically champion or spearhead?
Well, again, post-COVID, hopefully by next year, we really wanna focus on small businesses. You know, I, I, um, in order to campaign, I thought, okay, I'll go store to store and let them know that I'm running for city council. Introduce myself and leaving some, leave some cards. It was very sad. Every shopping center I approached, maybe there was only two or three businesses that I could actually physically walk in. Uh, you know, most doctors' offices, dentists, they're all close to public. Um, even that, I mean, i- it was so funny how limited we, I was in order to go meet someone. Um, even from a distance. So I, I really wanna focus on, on helping the small businesses come back and, and do well. Um, you know, offering um, community choice energy to Laguna Niguel citizens, it's another um. Goal of mine, I think people should be offered affordable um, and, and option as far as energy is concerned. Um, we are very limited right now and it's very expensive and um, it's not really good for the environment. You know, I go back to be a climate conscious citizen. I think um, offering um, you know, solar panels. Why can't we have that? You know, the, the city had um, the water company, uh, Molton Niguel Water Company. Offered incentives few years ago to all the citizens to remove the, the, their lawns and plant um, you know.
Or Native American California, yeah.
Exactly. Um, what a great idea. It worked. Many people converted and, and it, it saved and it saved the water. Um, landscapes look nicer. You know, they don't have that, you know, dried up lawn that um, looks ugly. Um, and it worked. So i- i- and the incentive amount wasn't much and it didn't really hurt. And it, a- a- at the end, it really saved water. So we could do the same thing. If, if we can organize and uh, come up with an initiative. To offer solar um, energy to homes, we should. So that's another goal of mine. Um. And again, preserving the older neighborhoods.
So you, 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 um, and what are some of the challenges with the older neighborhoods? You mentioned that. I mean, I'm familiar, like in Fullerton, for example. Some of the older neighborhoods, there's this issue with their, the old piping system, stuff of that nature. What is it that the issues for? Cause South County tends to be a little bit newer than places like Fullerton. So what are some of the challenges? I'm not familiar. What are the challenges?
Just the basic maintenance um, in the older neighborhoods, the sidewalks, um, you know, the ocean drains need, you know, new. Grills put outside so they can prevent things from falling in. Um, overgrown vegetation, again. Um, a lot of rental properties in the older neighborhoods and um, many aging families. So things are not being looked at carefully. So perhaps the city can have some sort of a monitoring system where they can drive by. And, you know, if there is an overgrown um, tree or if a tree looks pretty dangerous. Uh, then maybe there should be a citation issued to the homeowner or do something about it. I don't think. Just giving citations to someone that can't take care of the problem is gonna solve the problem. I think they should take another step and have a discussion with the homeowner. I know Lake Forest does that, where they offer um, the homeowners um, either a grant or low financing. So they can take care of the issues that they have with the house, you know, bad proof. Um. All of this could be a lot of preventive maintenance and stuff that the city should really get involved. Um, and there are neighborhoods in Laguna Niguel, believe it or not, Laguna Niguel is famous for having gated communities and state homes. But there are neighborhoods that there are no HOAs and nobody is really looking after these homes. So.
So the city, the city needs to basically step up that aspect.
Exactly.
But you mentioned, you mentioned about assisting small businesses, but you also mentioned earlier about um, attracting new businesses, right? So again, that's an interesting topic for me because it immediately begs me to ask the following question. What kind of businesses do you think would be the kind that should be attracted to neighborhoods? Or, or come, count communities like Laguna that are in premise? You know, bedroom communities at one point, right? And they, we have a commercial, but commercial tends to be, you know, whether it's uh, you know, like in Dana Point or, or San Juan Caprano. The deal, car dealerships or, you know, you got a Costco, you got a Walmart, you, you know. I'm curious as to what you think would be in twenty twenty. A type of businesses that we as community leaders, elected officials should attract to our communities.
Good question. Um, the city actually did a survey a few years ago and it's on their website. Where they've asked the citizens, what is it that they, they wanna see uh, in the city of Laguna Niguel? And many, many, many people have asked for more restaurants. We don't have enough eateries here. Um, our population has grown, but our services haven't. So I wanna see more restaurant, more sit-down, nice restaurants in Laguna Niguel. Um, you know, right now, we don't have that many and we travel outside of our city to go dine in a nice place. So I wanna see more sit-down restaurants, um, and service, service-based businesses, you know, shoe repair. Um, more dry cleaners, just basic stuff that we need at perhaps every shopping center within Laguna Niguel.
So that's, that's interesting because again, I could tell you, you want restaurants, I will send you some from San Clemente. I mean, it's like we, 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 we trip over restaurants and there's more restaurants open all the time. But yeah, it's interesting because just up the street, you guys are faced with this different scenario. Um, I've, I've asked that question before as well and some people have said, well, you know, we may need, we may need to look at some innovative. Like to your point, high-tech or, or, you know, innovative light industrial that could be housed in our commercial zones. But that is not, you know, a massive infrastructure thing. And it also provides better than, uh, you know, minimum wage jobs for those people that are starting their careers. That are maybe born and raised in Laguna Niguel, that want to basically approach something, start down a path. For an industry or a sector that's growing versus dying. So it, it, I think again, speaking to kind of thing outside the box, where we're at today as communities. Elected officials, I would hope, actually are willing to go there because it requires that new thinking. Um, in order to achieve a sustainable model, both economically, culturally, um, you know, pride of place, whatever you wanna call it. Um, it's, it's gonna be interesting to see. It's gonna be interesting to see whether we rise to that challenge, you know?
We, you know, we, we're really, having um, a diverse city council is really important. Having people with different focus is really important. I am an educator and I really wanna think about the children, you know. I, I was devastated for uh, parents during this, I am still devastated for them during this COVID time. Because they, the kids have no interaction. So, you know, they're lacking a lot of stuff right now. Uh, so once all this is lifted, I wanna see more places for kids. I mean, we have great parks in Laguna Niguel. But maybe more indoor facilities to serve the children, you know, I don't know, art classes, um. Gym, gyms for little kids. There's so much we can do. We just need to switch our focus to families first. When it comes to planning.
So you mentioned the word diversity. I'm gonna ask you really lightly because it's, it's interesting. You know, you and I come from a, from, from a diverse background. We've, we've lived in different places uh, on the globe. We make the, make South County our home and there is a lot of diversity in South County. There's probably a lot more diversity than a lot of people realize in these communities because of quality of life. You know, and a lot of the people that are in these communities that come from maybe international or global backgrounds. Uh, first generation, second generation immigrants, you know, there's a lot of high level of education, business ownership, what have you, right? Um, I personally find it to be a very nice fabric to these communities, that, that we have this diversity, right? But it also brings with it, I think, a certain nuance, especially when it comes, for example, for senior care, right? That we need to be sensitive to the fact that we have diverse communities. And that not, we cannot deal with everybody in our communities with the same solu-, you know, approach. You find that that is something that is currently in place at city council in Laguna Niguel? Or that's something that needs to be brought into play?
We definitely don't have the diversity needed. And by diversity, I'm not just talking about me from Iran. I'm talking about me from a working class, middle-class business owner. Um, that actually drives in Laguna Niguel to go around doing, you know, doing my business. So um, that's what I mean by, that's the kind of diversity I wanna see. I, I think our city council members are all from the same mindset. And we need to change that. We need to bring in people with different thinking, um, different ideas. And not just constantly have anonymous votes on everything. Um.
Oh wow, I didn't realize that, that, that's.
Yeah, we, we, we need to have um, a little bit of challenge when it comes to our city council. We just have. We've, we've, nobody has ever challenged our city council. We haven't really seen a change. It's been the same. Um, basically, one leaves and brings another one just like him to, to, to take the seat. So um, it's, it's, it's going to be a tough race. It's been a tough race and it's going to be um. Up to this, you know, to the residents to realize that we really need to have a voice for everybody at a city council.
How, how has the response been for you during this campaign? I mean, I, you, you mentioned it was tough. You meant, we, we talked about how it's very unusual. You can't really go out there and shake people's hands and meet them at the farmer's market, et cetera. How has it been?
Well, I've been aggressively campaigning. I have um, you know, distributed more than fifteen thousand postcards um, door to door. With my volunteers. Um, you know, we've done major texting, we're doing phone banking, um. You know, mailers, um, the, the amount of mailers that we are sending out is enormous. And hopefully people will actually pick it up and look at it. We don't know. Um, so it's gonna be an interesting year. We, we, there's a lot of unknowns right now. But we have done everything that it's suggested and um, you know, hopefully it'll pay off.
Well, I'll tell, I'll tell you something. I think, I, I wish you all the luck in November. But I have a feeling that regardless of what the outcome is, in November, uh, you're not going anywhere. I think, I think you will probably continue to plug away and find different ways to be of service to your community. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I thank you because it is, it is, it is thankless. I mean, I don't think, I don't think we give people enough credit, whether you agree with them. We don't agree with them, but for people to stand up and actually put themselves into this gauntlet, be, to try to be of service. I mean, you're not getting paid for this position, you know, it's, 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 it's hours of your time. It, it's not something you're gonna just show up at the city council meetings and make decisions. You gotta do homework, you got a background, gotta coordinate with different commissions. It is a, it is work. And to be willing to work for other people in your community is a honorable uh, pursuit. And I, I thank you for your service even in advance. I know you, I know you're not going anywhere. So.
Well, it's so funny you said that because I was just telling my husband today, you know, as I'm phone banking, I'm getting a lot of um, positive feedback from people. That have already voted for me. And I said, you know what? Win or lose, I will be attending as many city council meetings as I can. Because I really want my voice to be heard. So they're better off to just elect me.
Just elect Shawnee because otherwise she's gonna be there anyway.
They're gonna hear me anyways.
Whether it's your three minutes at the podium or sitting in city council, there's no stopping you.
Yes, I, I honestly think we need more people engaged. I think we need more people to speak up and, you know, not just complain. Don't wait till things happen and then complain. Don't wait till they build the high rises and then go, go complain. Get involved now. If you can make it to city council meetings, if you can read more about them. And make an educated um, voting, you know, make sure that you know the candidate you're voting for. Yes, in Laguna Niguel, uh, we have three seats open, but if you don't know the candidates, don't vote for them, please. Because you're just taking away our chances of, of, of taking that seat. Um, so educate yourself, you know?
You're not, and you're not districted, right, Shawnee?
No, no, we're not.
Right. So, so that's the other thing too, that's even more, I think more important is that. Although you could argue, even if you're districted as well, is you, you really should know who it is that you're basically putting in that seat. Because there are things that come up. There's things that come up sometimes that you don't anticipate. And you need to have somebody there that is willing, especially this year, you know, if there's anything that's been highlighted. Is unity versus diffusiveness, working across, you know, with people, finding compromises. Willing to basically put, like you said, people first, uh, communities first, uh, is, is super critical. Um, and I think from what I'm seeing is that there is a level of engagement in twenty twenty. Whether you agree with the direction of the engagement or not, but there's a level of engagement in twenty twenty that actually is, has not, I have not seen in a very long time. And I think it's driven by a lot of emotion, a lot of feelings, a lot of whatever, but it, it, I'd rather have people that disagree with me. But are actually engaged in the process than people that are not engaged.
Absolutely.
I will always say that. And, and, you know, I mean, San Clemente sometimes drives me nuts. And people in San Clemente is not gonna be surprised to hear me say that. Sometimes it drives me nuts because we are so engaged. It's like a dysfunctional family. Everybody's in everybody's business. However, I would have it no other way because the alternative of not being engaged right now. Especially during an election process, that is almost irresponsible citizenship. So.
Yes, and I honestly, I hope everyone in Laguna Niguel really looks at, you know, their choices and, and decides based on the knowledge. You know, check out our websites, know who you're voting for. Don't just go, you know. Vote whoever, I, because you have a nice city and everything is going well as far as you can see. Um, you know, look at the issues that candidates are bringing up and, and vote based on their um, plans.
Yeah, I mean, who, who would have known that in January, that uh, people were gonna be distance learning? That uh, restaurants were gonna be at half capacity, that uh, you were gonna have to make decisions about patio seating versus non-patio seating. That you were going to need to figure out whether you should, you know, you should allow or not allow alcohol sales on delivery. I mean, all these decisions that had to be made, nobody anticipated them in January and nobody was spared. I mean, whether you're a bedroom community or whether you're a commercial center, whether you're Irvine or you're Laguna Niguel, whether you are, you know, it, it doesn't matter. You needed to have in place the kind of leadership that would actually take that responsibility seriously. And have solutions, not just basically sit around and go, I don't know, you know, well, well, I put my head in the sand, maybe eventually this will go away. Uh, you know, six months later, here we are. So.
Another good thing that came out of the pandemic was um, the parking lot seating. I'm actually enjoying that. Maybe if we can continue and make it nicer. It was very European the other night when we visited um, an Italian restaurant in Laguna Niguel. We were literally in the parking lot, right in front of the restaurant.
Isn't it fascinating? Isn't it fascinating that that took almost a blink of an eye to be approved? Yet the same thing that we were talking, we, we approved for years upon years upon years on multiple city councils. I'm not gonna pick on any one particular city in advance, okay? Giving two additional seats for patio or to basically incorporate some sort of outside seating was such a drawn-out. Arduous process that was literally set up to basically cause somebody enough frustration that they would give up trying to get it done. And when it, we hit, we got hit with a pandemic, you want outside seating? Sure. Here you go. You got outside seating.
It looks nice. It's wonderful. And you know, one of the issues that um, we have in Laguna Niguel is we have too much parking. So I hope that moving forward, we can use some of those parking spaces and give these restaurants the opportunity to give us, you know, better seating outdoors.
It's good for business.
Yeah, it, it really was a fabulous experience, I have to say. I, I, you know, from far, I thought parking lot. But once I was there, you know, surrounded with um, lights and, you know, a canopy above my head and.
Yeah, and they've got, they've got temporary fencing and, you know, they've got some plants and pots. I mean, it's happening all, all around and I agree with you. I hope that that continues because it adds a flavor. I mean, we, we say European, but like that al fresco dining component now. And it's nice. It really is nice. And we are blessed by temper, by climate that is, you know, very. Uh, you know, most people are envious of us that we're having the climate that we have.
Absolutely.
That's a, that's a perfect example. So with that being said, I really appreciate you taking the time. I know you're a busy lady. I'm not gonna try to, I don't wanna keep you any longer. I wish you luck, my friend. I really do. And um, I want you back on and I'm gonna make a prediction. I'm gonna want you back on once you win.
Thank you so much. I will be back when I win. Thank you.
And if you don't, come back on anyway. We'll talk about what some issues are going on.
Absolutely. It was a pleasure. Thank you so much for having me.
Likewise, Shawnee. Thank you very much. You have a wonderful day and, and everybody, thank you again. And, and everybody, thank you again for joining us for another candidate spotlight on the rad life. We will be back with some more later on this week. Thanks, Shawnee. Good luck. Bye-bye.